Anything wrong? Ray?
I got it.
Sorry. I did turn my phone on. Ray is out of town. His mother turned 90 this weekend, so he flew down to be with her. He'll be back tomorrow. However, he also asked that I would ask the council if we do not put anything on the consent agenda tonight. He would like to be here Thursday night for all of that to happen, so I'll leave that up to you, but that was his request. So, that being said, this is Monday, June 7th at 6:30, and we are ready to start our meeting. So, we'll turn it over to Lisa Newberry.
Okay. For planning and development, we don't have any cases to hear tonight, but we do, what I'll be asking for Thursday night is for us to vote on the 2020 building code for electrical. As I understand from Tim, the state is currently using the 2017 building code, so we'll need to adopt that on Thursday night. And then the next thing is the comprehensive mask, and the council to approve for the mayor to sign the memorandum of agreement for the county. This is where the county brings in the Northeast Regional Georgia Council, I think is what it's called, to meet with all the cities and adopt the new map, so I'll be asking for everyone to vote on that. And then the last couple of things I have is looking for an update on the dump day, the second dump day of the year that we talked about a couple of months ago. Do we have anything new on that?
Do you have any update on the second dump day? We'll get by Thursday.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then I wanted to introduce someone tonight who has a new business on Main Street. It's an awesome business. I had the pleasure going there last weekend and doing it. So Ms. Tanya Argo, I'm asking you to come up to the podium and tell us about your new business on Main Street. And this is not the only new business on Main Street, but this is what we need on our Main Street. This is one of the businesses that we need.
Hi, guys. My name is Tara Argo, and my mom, her name is Darlene Vaughn, and we started the Loganville Maker Studio in February. We opened on February 15th. We've both lived in Loganville pretty much our whole life. She moved here in high school and went to Loganville High School, right here in this building. And I've lived here. My grandfather helped start the Loganville Fire Department, so we love Loganville, and we know that it's growing exponentially and very quickly, and so we always talk about things to do. We need things to do. So, we saw the space for rent. We know that Main Street is a hot topic in Loganville, and we thought we could add something to it. So, we have classes there every night at 6 o'clock where you can come. You can bring your friends. You can bring kids. You can do whatever you want, and we make crafts together. We teach how to paint, and it's personalized, and you can take something home. So I have a little video example here that we made for Ms. Newberry of things you can make. We have door hangers, and we do other things like engrave cutting boards and things like that, but we're a small business. We know that people are really hopeful to get small businesses onto the Main Street, so we're there, and we really appreciate any business that you guys could give us. And if not, just come by and visit us. We have coffee, and it's really pretty inside, so thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. And that is all I have, other than I have a text from someone on YouTube saying they cannot hear us up here. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. Okay. Next, we'll go to our finance chairwoman, Anne Hunsinger.
Thank you. The first item on my agenda, do we need to amend it, though, Dani? I needed to make a motion to amend the YMCA discussion. We need to strike that? Okay. All right. So Kristy, can you take that off? Sorry. Anyway, the first item is the fiscal year-end, 630/2022 budget appropriations ordinance and the public hearing. Dani, I'll let you take it from here.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council. You take YouTube yet, Cal? Before I get started? Nothing wrong with it. So Ms. Newberry, if you would text them back and ask them if they can hear before I start. This is a public hearing. So this is one of two public hearings that we're required to do for the budget. This is the adopt Thursday. Thursday, we'll be asking you to adopt the fiscal year 22 budget. Nothing's really changed from the budget we're in now to the new budget. We'll go through it fairly quickly unless you have questions, and I'll be happy to answer them from you and the audience. Like I said, this is a public hearing, so we will take questions from the audience. Any response back from YouTube world? All right. Here we go. Hopefully, they can hear us. Which way? I got a point, Cal.
Can you get closer to the mic?
Is that better? Okay. You didn't do that for me. Says on. Now it says on. Okay. One, two, three, go. Okay. So start off with the fiscal year. So FY is fiscal year 2022, so our budget ends June 30th of 2022. It doesn't start until July 1st of 2021. So some of the things, just to get off the bat, we increased in the general fund. We replaced lots of vehicles, I believe. Five vehicles and three police cars will be added. We're adding some build and repair maintenance, some fleet equipment for the fuel pump. We're adding money in the streets paving to pave hopefully more streets, a skid steer replacement of a tractor, and computers and telephones for the MBTS, which is the Police and Fire Use MBTS, Mobile Data Terminal is what it stands for. So we've increased that funding there. Some of the cuts from the general fund in order to balance the budget was engineering fees in various departments in the general fund, equipment in various departments, site improvements. The biggest reduction in the general fund revenue and expenditures was the CDBG, as Community Development Block Grant. We did not get awards for 2020. We were denied. And the L-MIG is only one year, where this budget we're in now currently has two years, so you'll see that funding difference. That's because we've already, we combined two years, fiscal year 20 and 21, I believe, into the L-MIG that we're in now. And of course, this fiscal budget, we received CARES money, which was not in the original budget of 100 and, no, I'm sorry, it was $500 and something thousand dollars. So the revenue is the first thing I do when I do a budget. I can control spending. I cannot control what I collect. So the fiscal year 22 budget is $12,592,498, a difference from last year's budget, the one we're in now, of $439,000. Most of that is CDBG. That was almost a half a million dollars. So it's almost the identical budget as last year, or the year we're in now, I should say. All right. Break it down revenues, where the money comes from, as you can see. You probably can't see that, but general property tax is 46% of our budget. Next to, I believe, loss of 11%, other tax 12%, and then this goes down from there. Expenditures is exactly the same. It's that $12 million number. It's the balanced budget. I have to present a balanced budget to you all to adopt. So this breaks it down by department. In the general fund, legislative went up $10,810 with anticipation that we could possibly have four new elected officials, which we had to send in the school plus uniforms. That's the majority of that cost. Executive, myself. Department went down $26,000. Elections, we had zero money in this budget because we don't have elections, but we will have an election in the new budget. $13,000 went up. Financial admin went down $59,000. IT went down $23,000. General government buildings went up $145,000. Judicial went down $12,000, almost $13,000. Police went up $3,600. Fire department went down $23,000. Public works went down $12,000. And this budget is on the website. If y'all want to look at it, it's already uploaded. Highways and streets, $577,000 went down mainly because CDVG. Fleet went up $237,000. That's where we stuck the money in for all the vehicles. Planings only went up $25,000. Events went down $28,000. Any questions so far on the general fund? So it's pretty much how it's broke up. Of that $12 million, public safety, police and fire get 48%, and then it goes down to single digits from there. So the majority of the tax money or the general fund goes to public safety. It's by far the two biggest departments that we have, both around $3 million in each department.
What'd you say on the general government building, then, Dani?
I'm sorry. What's that?
The general government building?
It went up $145,000. I'm sorry. It went down $145,000. I forgot to put a minus sign there. So it was at $906,000, and new budget is $760,000. Any questions before I move to the enterprise? Any questions from the audience? If you have a question, please come up here and ask so that YouTube can hear us. Okay? All right. We're going to move to the enterprise fund. This is your water and sewer, stormwater fund. This is the, was called the Business Fund of the City. It does not use taxpayer funds. It is a user-based fee, such as water and sewer and stormwater fees. So the increases to these funds were, there's four departments. They're buying fleet trucks, a Batco, and infrastructure repair and maintenance to the water lines, sewer lines, stormwater. Some of the cuts that Brandon and I did were engineering fees, infrastructure, lab services, build and repair maintenance, and chemicals. A lot of this is directly tied to the update of Phase 2 of the plant. It's almost completed, so we're going to start seeing some small cost savings, mainly chemicals for the plant because it went from chlorine to a ultraviolet light system. So the enterprise fund currently is $9,339,178. The new budget, if you approve, will be $9,330,256, a difference of $8,900. These are almost identical budgets. And how that's broken up in his revenues, water sales, sewer sales make up the majority of his budget, followed by septic collars, which we charge people with septic companies come and dump in our plant. We did increase that by $200,000 this year. With the new plant, we are able to treat more sewer from 1.5 million roughly to 3.3 million gallons a day. Right now, we're sitting at 1.5 to 1.7, depending on how many sprinklers are running. And then tap fees follow up the revenue as well. Expenditures by department. Wastewater is at $4,119,000, a reduction of $115,000. A lot of that money got moved from WQC, which is wastewater, to Water Department. It's just shifting the funds, the way we did some things with line items, because overall it didn't go down, but, you know, $8,000. Stormwater is $570,000, a reduction of $9,000. Sewer, $643,600, a reduction of $29,286. Water is sitting almost at $4 million with an increase of $144,526, but a lot of that comes from wastewater, as far as where we put the power for the plant. It comes out in one department versus all of them. We've been streamlining some of these departments since I became city manager. It makes it easier on a county when you pull the funds from ones versus 12 different departments. Okay. The expenditures broke up. Who spends the most? Water and wastewater are almost even at 43% and 44%. Stormwater, 6%, sewer at 7%. Any questions on enterprise fund? Putting anybody to sleep yet? All right. Special revenue funds. These are your non-taxpayer. They, some of them are taxes. For instance, SPOST is a tax. It's your 1% sales tax. Every time someone that runs through the city or in Walton, or should say in Walton and Gwinnett County, they pay that 1 cent extra that comes to the cities based on our population. And as you can see, the Gwinnett County SPOST, we had to budget this every single year, the same, for the next five or four years. It ends in 2023, so we will be budgeting the same thing until 2023. But we collect, we've probably collected in the Gwinnett SPOST, close to one and a half million dollars now. Is that correct? Walton County SPOST, it's sitting at $5.799 million. As you can see, last year was increased. That's discussed interest, but we had to show the full amount that was approved in the resolution, and that ends in 2024. Those are two major funds that if we did not have, it would come directly from the general fund, which is property tax money. Just to give you a background, the Gwinnett SPOST is paying for your park at Destination. We're in the midst of getting ready to bid that park out with restrooms, a new, a whole new pavilion, lighting, tracks going to be redone. It's almost a $2 million project with sidewalks that will connect it from old Loganville to the park. And then on the Walton County side, that's $2 million in there for, I'm sorry, for public safety, a million for the fire, a million for the police. You have $3 million for transportation, and then a little bit, $200,000 for parks, which will be probably, Toddler Park will upgrade once the money comes in. So all those funds are general fund items. If we didn't have that money, we would not either do the project or have to get the money somewhere else. Solid waste, that's your sanitation. We're at $2.3 million. Increase, $68,000. Capital recovery, that's because we've added more customers, not because we went up on the rates. Actually, they went up and we ate some of the cost. The city did. Confiscated assets, this is the money that your local drug dealers provide to the city. It's based on the cases that the city employees work for the DEA. We get a percentage of that, and that money drops whenever the federal government really releases it. We have no idea when it drops. We just get notification that it's dropped. Only the police chief can use this money at his discretion. It has to stay with the police department. Typically, we've been buying police cars, computers, guns. We didn't buy vests, did we? We had in the past, but it's typically those type of items. So that's confiscated assets. Capital recovery is your 3% fee for all tap fees. So when a builder comes in, builds, we assess a tap fee, or tax, if you will, to the developer. That goes to money, and that can be used for capital recovery projects, water, stormwater, sewer, something of that nature. You'll hear us tonight approve close to $1.5 million in capital recovery money that we're going to use for the plant. Hotel motel, that's the tax that they collect every time someone stays at the motels. That can only be used for tourism. A lot of our magazines and flyers that we print here is paid for out of that fund. It's at $70,000, increase of $10,000. Any questions on the special revenue funds? And we're going to be adding another one very soon, the American Recovery Plan. This is SPOST for Gwinnett County broke down, 43% transportation, that's your sidewalks, 44% being recreation, that's Destination Park. Infrastructure is a water and sewer line we got to run to get water and sewer to that park, and that's at 12%. Next is Walton County SPOST. Like I said before, 40% goes to public safety, 55% transportation, and 3.9% for recreation. And I am done. So thank Natalie for helping with this. It's a long and tedious project that her and I do for several, several months, and all the department heads that meet with me, and I upset them when I don't give them what they want, but as you can see, we kept the budget the same. We don't know where this is going with this pandemic. That's my mindset that we did. We did not include raises for the employees. I'm taking a little beating on that, but not to say we can't look at it later on in the year when the money comes in. But rather play it safe than sorry. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the audience?
I do have a question. Do you have any idea on the American Rescue Plan, what kind of money will be coming in?
Yes. We, it came in Thursday when I was on vacation. It's based on the population of 12,000 for the city. It's about 400 pages of reading I have to do in the next couple of days. It's something we need to prove, so I may have to call council meeting on that because we got to pass the Civil Rights Act. We got to pass, there's like five different acts that we have to say that we accept in order to get these funds. They're not telling us how they can be used. They're saying they're left at the discretion of the NEUs, which is the non-something governments, which is us, governments with population less than 50,000. But to answer your question, it's 4.8 million. If it all comes, the first drop was 2.4 million.
Have we received it yet? Or we haven't jumped through the numbers?
No.
Then we'll start receiving.
We've sent the state the tax exempt form for the city, or it's like our social security number for the city. We sent that. We sent the bank account with the routing number, but we have not received those funds. So once that comes, I'll have to ask maybe for a call to council meeting. I would do it Thursday, but I'm not ready. It's so much information. It's about this thick, and they're not really telling us like they did with CARES Act. They're saying they're leaving it to us to determine the eligibility of the projects.
Is it 4.8 over the next two years or over the next 12 months?
It just says in two payments. It doesn't say when they're going to drop those payments. Hopefully, the first payment will be, it did say by August, but we just don't know yet. There's not a lot of information out there. GMA is doing a little bit. I've been in two classes so far where they've talked about it. There's more questions than there are answers at this point, but it's something that we're going to have to get with Robin, let her help us read this because it's very in-depth. It makes me leery because they're saying it's free money, and I know nothing's free. It makes me very leery that they're going to come back and say, oh, this is not eligible project, so we need $4.8 million back. But it does say that infrastructure is a big eligible expense, so more than likely, if it's up to me, I will be coming to y'all to do sewer and water expansions. It does say about premium pay for essential workers, but it's very complicated. Excuse me. Complicated. How I explained it?
Is it the Rescue Plan? The American Rescue Plan?
Yes. Yes. ARP. So that'll be a new fund that we'll have to add with a special audit because it's federal money. Thank you. And I'll do it again Thursday night.
Okay. The next item is the year-end budget adjustments. Normally, we put this on consent. Obviously, we'll talk about it and vote on Thursday. This is just a year-end housekeeping that moves money from one budget to the next, but we have to approve that in council. So we'll put that on there. The copier contract for services, it is in your packet. We want to do a new copier for court services. It's $172.35 for a 28-month term. Any questions on that? Okay. Talk about that on Thursday. Okay. Now let's talk about the library. I would like to say a couple of things, and I'd like to open the floor for the council to discuss. So here are kind of the facts where we are right now. We are one of, we are number 10 on a list of 10 for award for a $2 million grant for the library. As I see it, we have two major hurdles that we have to get through, and that is the land and the deeds. We have to figure out how that all works, and we have to figure out if the library is $2,001, where the $1 plus is coming from. Of course, we know it's going to be more than a dollar, but even if we had a comprehensive plan now for what the library would cost to build, this isn't going to be granted, and we wouldn't even know if we got it until 2023. So, correct, right? Library? Yeah. That's what was said in the April council meeting, so that's what I had in my notes. So there's no way tonight to answer all the questions that are out there about the library. Personally, to be clear, I do not think that taxpayer money should pay for a library, and I'm not really open to doing just a giveaway of land that the city owns, and I think we've kind of talked about it. However, all of those questions, none of those questions have to be answered right now. We have a year-plus to do that. What we need right now is to give the library board a go-ahead to pursue the grant, and that is all. It's just a go-ahead for support from the city that says, we want you to go after that money. And the way I kind of look at it is if one of my kids came to me and said, hey, my mom, I got an opportunity to have a scholarship, and I go, oh, my God, well, if you get it, how are we going to pay for it? And how are we going to send you? And how are we going to afford the food? And how are we going to afford the apartment? You never know until you try. I support the library board going after a scholarship, or in this case, a grant, to potentially build a new facility, fix up the facility, whatever we can do with that money, but that's all we have to answer right now. I'd like to open it for discussion.
So what are we, what and when are we on the hook for the money once they get the grant, once they get the approval?
Well, first, we'd have to be awarded the grant in 2023, but between now and then, and I talked to Stacy today, I think that the library board in the city has to work collaboratively to come up with capital campaigns and donations and figure out who has to pay for what. If at the point when the grant is awarded and the city doesn't have the money and the whole world's, you know, stopped, I'm sure we have the opportunity to say, no, thank you. Please pass it to the next people. But at this point, going for the grant does not obligate us, one, to take it, or, two, to build.
All right. So, and that's, I appreciate your characterization of it. So is it, would it be voted on with the legislature in 22 or 23?
The notes I had said 2023.
Okay.
But can any of y'all confirm that? That's what Stacy, I think that's what you said in your presentation in April.
So, and then, and then, all right, just like you're saying, something, someone's got to champion working through this. We've got to figure out the property issue, but then we've got to figure out that money. Is that, is that the library board is going to champion looking at that, or is that going to be the city?
That I don't know. That's something we have to talk about.
Okay.
But until we get to the point where, where we have the money to even deal with, and again, we're 10th on a list of 1 to 10, but it's still $2 million bucks. I mean, that's 15% of the city budget. I mean, what if we got $2 million bucks? I mean, and we could put it to the library and do something with it, other than sitting here and kind of, because we can't answer every question right now for two years from now, we turn it down.
As I understand, we've got six years, if we go for it, we got six years to complete it.
That's, as I understand it, that's correct. Please, and if any of you, we have five. Okay. Five.
Five years? So what is, what is wrong with us waiting till we get through the retreat so we've got some more concrete plans and then come back? I mean, why the rush? Why tonight?
I don't think there's a rush at all. I just, I think that from Stacy, my conversation with you this afternoon, the librarian at the state that you spoke with, they're waiting for us to either say yes or no, and they've held that for how long? How long have they, are they kind of?
They would like and answer on the Thursday, but they're.
Okay. What's a little time? After the retreat?
I don't think it's unreasonable to go back to state and say, hey, we've got this retreat planned. This is going to be a big topic, and we give an answer then.
Any other questions? Say again?
She was very clear that they will need a decision.
The state librarian was very clear that she will need a decision at that point as to whether you want to go forward or not.
Well, I guess my only question is, what would we know at the retreat? Again, all we're doing is telling them to essentially apply for a scholarship. What would we know at the retreat that we wouldn't know now that would give them the go-ahead so they can start the process?
Where's the library going to go?
I don't, we don't have to decide. I don't, we don't have to decide that right now.
How do we know much money we need?
We wouldn't know until it got awarded anyway, and we wouldn't know that at the retreat either.
And, Ernie, are we absolutely, absolutely positive, we commit today, that two years into this, we're not going to be on the hook for anything that we committed to today, that we can't come up with money? I mean, it's a lot of money.
As I understand it, and please confirm, someone from the library, that if we are awarded the grant, we are not on the hook to build or take that money.
There's a legislative session, excuse me, my name's Nathan Rawl. I'm with the Georgia Public Library Service. Legislative session, to clarify, would start in January, January 22. The money would be available for fiscal year '23 if you were awarded that money.
Right.
If you were awarded that money and you decided not to move forward, we could possibly redirect that, those funds to another library system.
Okay.
So, it will, will be decided on, all right, so if we were to move forward and the board decide, if we were to give support for it and the board were to take that, it's going to get voted on by the legislature in this upcoming legislative session, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, and basically, what we're doing is we're just saying that we are behind them going for the grant, and if the grant is awarded.
Yeah, we support them asking for a grant.
But that's all we're obligated to, is just give them permission to go for the grant.
That's right. Can we, can we give them approval outside of a council work session? We cannot, correct?
What do you mean outside of a work session?
If we waited until after the retreat, and then the next meeting is not till August, we've lost 60 days of the application process. I don't think we could give them the approval that we gave them unless we were in a council meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, we'd have to do a special call of council session, I guess. I support voting to go through now. I don't know, and I know we're not going to vote until Thursday. Yeah, I mean, could I do a straw poll?
Yeah. I support it.
For now or for after?
Just pronounce it if they need it.
Okay. Linda?
I support it.
Jay?
I think I'd like to wait.
Okay.
And educate myself a little bit more.
Okay.
Sorry.
I think I'd like to wait so I can educate myself a little bit more on this.
Okay.
I would like to wait. I completely agree that this shouldn't cost the taxpayers, and I completely agree we should not gift any land for this. I have done a lot of research, Stacy and Lisa were both available all weekend, sent me a lot of information, a lot of talking, so I'm still in that due diligence phase.
Bill, do you have any thoughts?
Sure. I mean, so, I am, I do favor it. I think we need some more discussion. I look forward to, you know, thinking, talking about this more, and, and, you know, I like the idea that, you know, we've got, there are species that have to be solved. You have to figure out the property, the deed, that's existing property, you have to figure out where it's going to go, and you have to figure out how you're going to get there with the money wise, and those are things that, you know, I think that if we line those up, in the end, I mean, I sit back and think about, you know, the Chestnut Regional Library where I grew up, and, and, you know, it was, I mean, even then, was, was larger than what we have now. I liked what we saw about the, you know, the new Social Circle Library, and, you know, just the, you know, the atmosphere too. I mean, getting it off the highway, getting it downtown, I think that would be a benefit. But I think, let's answer those other questions, not, not answer them, but have a better, a better focus on them, and I, you know, if we do that, I think I'm ready.
Okay. So, would you like to wait or vote next, on Thursday?
So, I, I mean, I think if we can wait till after, if she's going to let us wait till after the tent, I think that'd be great.
Do you have a drop-dead date?
I can get one.
Okay. If you could get that for us, or shoot me an email about it, that'd be great. Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions or anything about the library before we move on? Oh, anybody in the public? I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. Thanks, Jay.
Thank you. If we go ahead with this, what are we going to do between now and then? There's been a lot of discussion, hours of discussion online that I know a lot of you have already seen about the so-called condition of the present library that's about to crumble and fall down. What is going to be done between now and 2013 to rectify that? Because it's just going to keep going downhill over the next two years.
Okay, that's a reasonable question. Dana, can you answer that?
I will soon, Randall, but I have not received no work request, but I can send him over there to look. Do an inspection.
That'd be great. Okay. Thank you. Oh, well, can we check it out and have a report on Thursday for it? We'll get a report on Thursday.
The grants are here, correct? In the past, we've had other things done. Can we pursue that at the same time?
I'm sorry?
But what has we had in the past, grants could have fixed different things with the library in the past, or we've possibly been able to find anything like that. Can you pursue that at the same time so that we can fix this if we don't get this grant in 2023? Plus, it's going to take years for all the rest of this stuff, so we're probably not going, if it all went the way they want it to, we're not going to have a library for 10 years at least.
Right.
But we have to take care of this 30-year-old building that is way too young to be in the condition that it's in and to let it continue to deteriorate where it's sitting right now.
Hang on, grab a mic. Sorry.
So, we can continue to make those minor repairs that we've been doing all these years. You know, we do have a line in the budget that we use towards those repairs, and then the state gives us a 50% match for any repairs and renovations that we need to do. So, we can continue to do that if they know that we're making a good faith effort.
Okay.
Going towards, you know, achieving the grant.
I think we need to do that, certainly. Okay, so Dana, you'll have Randall take a look and then let us know on Thursday?
I will.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hey, Jerry?
Hey. I'm concerned about the position that the council wants to take on this, because you're basically making a tacit endorsement of support for something you have no idea about, and you're giving a green flag to pursuing something that's so hard to describe, but yet, in the end, the expectation from the board and the publicity that's going to be made out of your decision is that, hey, we're all for this library, and that the taxpayers are going to get hit, slapped in the face with this because, well, the grant came through, and you guys said y'all would do it, and here we are now. It's like telling a 16-year-old kid, go down to the Ford place and pick out that Shelby GT 500, and they'll give you half the money down, and I don't know, me and your mama figure out where we get the rest of the money. And I really think you're politically putting yourselves in a potential hot spot. I think if the board wants to go get it, which when I was at the Rock Gym, they said they actually had the decision, but if it takes the city council to do this with the amount of concern that's out there already, and y'all come out on that ledge without the faith or the push of the people behind you, I really think you're going to find yourself in a difficult position to say no, and then you're going to slap us all with a huge tax bill. And that's my concern. As with respect to the current library, for it to be in the shape it's in, given the availability of money that was told to us, is really concerning to me. And I don't see what the problem is with the library sitting south on 78 and 20, when we talk about the gateway presence that our city is supposed to have, like we want to have this present when people come in to the city. What says more about our city than a nice library? Well, that library could be renovated, and that space could be added, and it would be an attraction coming into our city. So, I'm really having a hard time saying, let's go hide this, when that's the first thing you see coming in from south of the city. So, I really think y'all ought to think about that, because I think you're, I think you might as well just say, well, if we're going to do this, we're going to go ahead and support it, because I guarantee you, all these wonderful people on this library board are going to come back to you and say, you said yes today, so where's the money? And that's what my concern is.
I hear what you're saying. I don't know how to be personally any more clear by saying I don't support taxes being raised to pay for a library. Having worked in nonprofits before, when you have a nonprofit and you have a capital campaign, the onus for money and raising money is on both sides. You need donors, you need people that need a place to park some money, you have naming rights. There are hundreds of opportunities that can be given to people who want to donate money. I'm not going to put the taxes, I'm not going to put the citizens on the hook for taxes. I'm not going to give away city land. All I'm telling them is go apply for the scholarship, let's see what we can do. Go apply for the grant.
So, is that the way it's going to be publicly stated? Is that the way the entire council is going to vote? Because you may say that, but the other five may say, I'm all for the tax increases.
Well, and that's how the cookie crumbles when you have a vote. I'm just saying, you publicly, I can't be any more clear about my position.
Well, I understand you're one vote of seven, and my point is this, if, if you're against it, but the other six aren't, if the council can't come forward with a unified voice with respect to potential taxes, yes, we'll, in other words, if you can't cobble together some language that says, yes, we support this scholarship attempt, but we will definitely not support taxpayer funding in your statement or vote, then that's going to assure the citizens. You see what I'm saying?
I, given the fact that, yes, I see what you're saying, and I don't have any way that I know of right now to guarantee you when anybody's going to vote until the vote happens, and it's likely that whenever this is granted, if we win the grant, you'll have a different council or a mix of different people up your side. I can't tell you that. I'm just trying to support our local library. I've read, I've read the Concerned Citizens page, I've read the Watch Loganville Grow page, I've gotten emails and phone calls and letters in my box. A lot of people support an updated facility of some type. Almost nobody has said, no library. They've said, move it here, update there. I think the, the point is, is that a lot of people see the need for it, but as I stated at the very beginning, the two hurdles are the land and the deeds and how to pay for it, and there's nobody up here that can tell you today or in six months how we're going to pay for it, because we don't know what it's going to cost unless and until we're awarded the grant. I mean, as I'm sure lumber prices have almost doubled. What will they be in a year? I don't know.
No, I understand what you're saying. All I'm saying is, if the council, if you and other members feel strongly about taxpayer burden, and all you're doing is signaling the proposition of attempting the grant, why can't you say in the same statement with, yeah, we're all for going for the grant as long as taxpayers aren't going to have to fund it? Now, that's a statement the council could make, all in one thing.
I think we all said that.
Yeah, we did say that.
Oh, okay, well, if that's what y'all are putting together, okay.
But I mean, we can't, we can't, there's nothing to vote on that for, for right now. We can all support it.
And listen, if the moon and stars lined up, we have this retreat, and we can figure out how to pay for this and, and go forward with it, I mean, I kind of look back and say, it's been said that we've had twice now, and it hasn't happened, so what happened? Why weren't we planning back then for this? And it looks like to me, we've got five years, if it's approved, we have five years ahead of us to plan for it. I just wonder how we're going to pay for it without taxing the taxpayers.
Well, and further, I take, I take exception that it's the city's responsibility to figure out how to fund all of it. It isn't. It's got to be a collaborative effort between the city and the citizens and the library.
If it's on us, it's a no. It's, it's got to be.
It's got to be a group effort, completely, 100%. Okay.
And this is one of the reasons we're having our retreat, is to make the plan for, hopefully for something to start happening on downtown, and this is part of the puzzle.
Right.
Just a quick question. I'm sure it doesn't matter in the big scheme of things. I'm just thinking what you said, Anna, about that the council could change by the time we get to 2023. So, if we go to the legislature and it's approved, and we get the grant money, and then the council changes, how does that work? Because, I guess I'm thinking, is that leaving us on the hook in that library board approves the money to come through, but then a new council comes in, the majority, or new members and majority says, nah, we don't want this? How does that reflect with the library board? Or don't we know?
That's how the vote.
I don't know, I'm being clear.
That's, no, I mean, that's, that's what happens with the vote. I mean, unless we have put together a vote that has put the city on the hook, if all we are doing is saying, go for it with the, go forth with the grant, and then an election happens in November, and you've got three new faces up here, and you've got a majority that doesn't want a library, the library goes away.
Yeah, I guess I just, I'm feeling for them in that.
And Joanne, we're, the city is on the hook once we accept and receive the funds for the grant.
Right.
So, that's not, that's not this, that's not this decision, that's not January 2022, it's, it's, it's that point at which we accept it.
Right, okay, I've got that. And I don't know, I just, not that my opinion matters, but just, I think that, you know, Bill, you made really good points about, I don't know, I just feel like maybe we should find out where it's going to be. I mean, we still have this whole Main Street mess, and then it's like, I just keep thinking, like, what are we going to commit to put a library somewhere? We still don't know what's going on with the rest of it, and I hear what you're saying, Ann, that there's no, there's no harm in going after it and then deciding, but I guess I just keep coming back to feeling for the library people that, I don't know, let's give them as quick as an answer instead of saying, oh, okay, and then voting and time and map out all the pieces first, like what Bill was saying. That's all.
Can I? You know, all the council up here has indicated that they're not in favor of a tax increase to fund this library. I think I'm correct in saying that.
That's correct.
But the people that I get emails, phone calls from, texts, wonder how they would feel if we said we can't build it without a tax increase.
Eric, your question, hold on a minute.
I don't know.
Can I just add a bit of clarification? My name is Dana Russell. I'm on the Board of Trustees for the library. My understanding, and I might be corrected on this, is that the, the library is applying for the grant, and the city council is endorsing that application with its vote. The money will come to the library.
That's right.
And it's up to the library and other funders, whether it's the city, or the county, or whomever, to come up with a plan to fund the construction of the library. So, the library board can't do it alone, and, and can't do it without, you know, putting together the funding to do, to do the construction, which requires, would require a vote of the city council if there's money coming from the city council, the same of the county commission, if they vote to participate in the construction project.
Well, and Dana makes a great point. So, to be very clear, all the library board is asking for our approval and our consent and saying, hey, go for it. If they found all the capital money somewhere else and didn't need us, they could build the library right exactly where it sits without us. So, it doesn't, it doesn't put us on the hook for anything. We're just saying, go for it.
Other than the fact that you do own the property and the building.
Agreed.
And that's, that's a good point.
Am I going to talk now?
I have a microphone.
Yeah, no, Lisa was talking. Go ahead.
Okay. Can I talk now? I've served on this library board for, I think, probably 12 years, and this is the first, the last few months is the first time I've heard that we, how bad we needed a new library. I've served under two other people. Stacy came here, and she's done a wonderful job. The library is a very special place to me, and maybe you all don't feel that way, because some of you haven't been here that long, but Ms. Willie D. O'Kelly, DeBose, when she gave this land, she gave it for a library. And I, I continuously hear, oh, but the traffic's terrible, the traffic's terrible. Tell me a place in Loganville, the traffic's not terrible. But I also believe that this land across the street was bought from the city of Loganville, and it was bought with the idea that we were going to have a small community there. There's pictures where we went several years ago to the old City Hall building and saw how this was supposed to look, and we were all excited about it. Well, I've seen several things now that have really kind of struck me, and I feel, I have real mixed emotions about this library thing. The library, to me, is very special, and I know somebody said it's 30 years old. My house is 58 years old, but I certainly can't just doze it down. If something happens, we got to fix it. And in my heart, and I, I don't want to hurt anybody's feelings, I want everybody in this town to be happy with what we've got, and I've fought for that for years, and I think everybody, I know most of the people that work for the city know that I've been here to help whenever I could. But I think we need to give, say a lot of prayers about this. But I think we need to give, say a lot of prayers about this. I think we need to think about the land that was given for our library. I need to, I think, and Stacy, I'm not contradicting anything you said, but I do think that we need to really research and see what can be done. I know that Bill Jones, when he was the city manager, and Danny might have been here then too, fought to get that parking lot down there, and we got that. And I know that when the people in the city of Loganville really want something, the old folks, the old folks like me, if I really want something, I'll go out and fight for it. And I think that we need a library in Loganville. I really believe with all my heart we do. Rick is there, that's in charge of everything down there, does a wonderful job. The committee that we have now is, almost everybody's new. I didn't even know, three of them were on the committee till two weeks ago, and so I'm getting used to working with these new people on the committee, and then I didn't know were they are till, actually, I read on Facebook one day, uh, one of the member's names. I didn't even know he was on the library board, and I've been there all these years. But I think that if we all work together, this could be a good thing, but please, please, think about what you're doing. I don't want the taxpayers in Loganville to suffer. I'm one. I've been one for almost 60 years.
So am I.
And that's what, uh, that's what I want to, you to understand. I want to see a library. I want us to do a lot of research and see just what we could do down there. I've seen somebody that said, "Let's do it in the other end of City Hall. We got all that space back there." There's so many things, options, that we can look at, and I just think that's very important. And if I stepped on any toes, I'm sorry, but I just love Loganville, and I want the people that live in this town, the taxpayers that pay for what we have, to be happy. That's what's important to me, and I've been trying to talk to everybody that I possibly.
Ms. Janes, can you write me a check for $2 million, please? I just need a check for $2 million. We won't raise taxes if you give me that check.
I know, you can't yell. And you're smiling.
I just had a quick question. Mr. Rawl, you said, when they said if they gave you the go-ahead to go ahead and do the thing, and they said, "Will we be on the hook for it?" And you said, "You could probably pass it to somebody else." Based on the history of this city, I think we all would agree that we would like more than a, we possibly could, because we know what possibles can turn into in this town. I would like in writing that if the day comes that they do vote to seek the, uh, grant, and then we, as citizens, decide that we don't want the library, that there is a definite clause in there, that we are not committed to having to take that money, and then that's what will put us on the hook. A possibly could pass it to somebody else is not the same as you absolutely will not have to take the money and you will be completely off the hook. There's two different things, in my opinion.
Go ahead, Alma.
Okay, and now, now?
Excuse me.
I tell you, I've been coming to city council meetings for, since 2006, and we beat a dead horse to death. Do we want to move forward, or do we not? And I think a new library would be a big jumpstart for the city of Loganville to move forward. If we pass up the opportunity for a $2 million grant, I think we're doing ourselves a great injustice. We owe it to our children to have a place for them to grow and learn and have a building with new technology, and if the citizens own all this land across the street, I'd donate my little spot to build a library. So I think that we've got to make some decisions and stuff, I mean, we have two years to make a decision, and if we have two years to apply for this grant and then say yes or no, well, what the heck's the problem? It's a no-brainer to me, so, that's what Rita said, so, anyway, that's what I.
Thanks, Alma.
Mr. Rawl, hey, good to see you. You didn't answer Melanie's question, what does the term possible mean?
The term possible is my term. I can't tell you that, um, well, I'm finding the words. I've been involved in over 85 library projects in my 15 years here. We've had one that gave the money back. So that's what I can say. I can't give you anything in writing, but I understand what go, oh, okay. I understand what goes on, and, and again, we had a community that, that gave the money back. So that's what I can say to that.
I think one of the.
I can't give it to you in writing, so.
You know, and I know you don't know, just like there are hazards and stuff, so I just thought I'd leave it there.
I, I, I can't, I can't give it to you in writing.
I think one of the biggest questions we've got from the, and when we were at the Rock Gym, it was one of the biggest things I saw, was that this proposal has no form whatsoever that any of the public can grasp, and I think that, you know, like you said, you want to support getting the grant. A grant to what? A grant to, we have no clue what's going on. Had the library board, I think, had a vision, had a more concrete idea of what they wanted to propose, so that you could wrap your hands around it, I think that would go a lot, would go a lot further.
I think that that's unfair, and I'm going to tell you why. 18 months ago in the Rock Gym, someone came in with a plan that was glossy and beautiful, and the entire public thought that it was a done deal because he had a vision. All that the library wants is our okay to apply for a grant. It doesn't put us on the hook for anything. It doesn't, we cannot answer the questions that everybody wants answered today, next week, next month. And, and at this point, all they're asking is for their own city that they have their building in to say, "Hey, we support you. Go try to get this $2 million." That's all. There's no hidden agenda, there's no, there's no you're going to get this land, there's no we're going to take that land, there's, none of that's been discussed. We're just saying, "We support you trying to get $2 million bucks."
Well, I would agree with you if there weren't an article out there where they were already talking about where they want to put the library. I would agree with you if they weren't already out there talking about, "We want a library that's possibly 12,000 square feet like Social Circle." So there were these things out here that there, that the board's already talking about, irrespective of where your position is. So there's something there, and I understand where you're coming from, but I'm telling you what went on in the board meeting. I wasn't telling you my personal opinion.
I, I hear you.
So, so that's, that's what I was telling.
They can't do anything without our okay. They can't have the library in any other.
I get that, I get that.
In any other place without the whole council approving.
Yeah, I get that, that's why, that's why I'm looking to y'all for that voice, okay?
That's good, Linda, go ahead.
Is it? Okay. We're, we're going to get to that one question.
Why are we getting that question?
I asked a simple question at the meeting. You had 2005 details, and this is 2021. Your figure, you said you had 50,000 people visited in 2019, but in this article in the citizens, uh, Loganville thing, this article here, said that in 2016, you had three years at 130,000. So in 2019, you had 50,000 people that, that went into the library. That's half of what you had at that time. So as a business, if you're losing half your patronage, then how do you expand? You know what I'm saying? You would stay in the same position you are today, but that, that doesn't even, my question is, is this, and this goes back to what Danny said. Okay, Loganville owns the property, we own the building. Are we charging the rent for this, uh, library? Are we making any money off of rent or anything like that?
We're not. We're not. Yeah, not to my knowledge.
Okay, the second question is, is this, if you guys buy the property, who's going to own the building? Is the city of Loganville going to own this new building, or is the library going to own it on city property?
Honestly, that's the questions we don't have the answers to yet.
But the question.
That's 18 months down the road.
Yes, but the thing about it is, is these are the answers the citizens are worried about, they want to know in advance before someone commits to such a big project.
We're not committing to any project. We're committing to supporting them to go in after a grant. That's all.
I understand that.
And I, I, I mean, I don't think any council or any governing body could give you an answer to every question everybody wants to know. At the point when we're going to take the funds, every answer to that question, that all the questions you just asked are absolutely need to be answered before the first dime is committed or spent. But right now, all we're doing is saying, "We support you, go for it." That's all we're doing. I, they're all valid questions. What happens to the deed? Who's going to pay for it? Where's the building going to go? How many square feet? All of those are completely reasonable questions that must be answered, not today.
My question, though, is, if I'm coming to you, and I'm DOT, and I want to extend Highway 20 down 78, I'm going to have a proposal with costs, overruns, and all this information, and I'm going to have this within a certain amount of time. I'm not going to present you something from 2005 and then say, "Today's 2021." Those numbers and those statistics are nowhere even relevant today.
But the town hall was about citizen input for support of a new library?
Mm-hmm.
Not approval on a build? Because we're not there yet. We're just, we're just not to the point that everybody wants us to be to. We're only at the "go for it, go get a grant" point. That's it.
Okay.
I, I hear what you're saying, and, and don't misunderstand me, all of those questions, the questions that were asked in town hall, how much is it going to be? What's the square foot? All of those must be answered before the first penny, the first penny is allocated and committed for. I completely agree with you, but right now, all we're saying is, "Go apply, we support you." That's it. Doesn't put us on the hook at all. Okay, okay.
Ma'am. Mr. Rawl, I'm, I'm sorry to be picking on you, but your answers I trust and believe. You and I discussed at the town hall at what point the city has to actually commit to the financial, uh, aspects of this grant, their portion, our portion. When is that time?
That's a good question. And my answer, you're not going to like. My answer is, it all depends. It all depends, because as I was just speaking with Stacy, if the library board were to come up with money and buy a plot of land on, in Loganville, and if they were to come up with the money, see, there's a lot of ifs, if they were to come up with the money, then the library would be owned by the library board. There's several, there's four, over 400 libraries in the state of Georgia, and several of them are owned by library boards. Some of them are owned by the county, some of them are owned by the city. So we're not at that point. To answer your question in another way, I send my request to the state or to, uh, the Office of Planning and Budget. I send that request in November.
For the grant?
Yes, ma'am.
And what needs to be attached to that request?
What needs to be attached to that request?
I don't send any, anything attached, I just send a list.
It doesn't have to be any intent for Loganville to pay their portion, or?
I, I send a list of projects that I've approved. Everything, I'm not trying to fluff up here, but everything comes through me, and I send that request to the Office of Planning and Budget, and at that point, when the legislative session begins in January, then they deliberate at that point.
So at what point, I'm still a little confused, at what point does the city have to actually commit to their portion of?
The city may not have to commit, it just depends. It depends on where the funding is coming from. If the city is going to commit funding, we'll talk about when that needs to happen, but it may not be the city that's committing the funding.
Let's assume that it is.
It could be the county. If, if I, if we assume that the, that the city is going to, um, fund the library, fund the balance of the grant, it's a matching grant, I would like to know that by November.
November of this year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's no more comments, I think we've talked this as much as we need to talk this, so let's move on.
Thank you. Um, the last thing I have is just a retreat update. It's still on the 10th of July, it's still at Hard Labor Creek State Park, and I am trying to get, um, with Shane, I was out of town the last part of last week, and I will hopefully have an update on the facilitator on Thursday, unless you have one that I don't know about.
No, but I will need to know the agenda and who, um, if you want to invite the library board, if we're going to be discussing, I just need to know all those details.
Okay. I'll send an email out to council, and we'll talk about what everybody wants on the agenda. Does that work?
And that will be a public meeting that you can vote in.
Right.
Question about the, the retreat. When, I think we brought it up, let's have a retreat, I was talking about like a citywide, let's make a plan for the city, not just downtown development, not just economic development. So are we going to talk about other things that are going city, that we need to make plans for?
It was my understanding the retreat was to help develop, to take the votes and all of the feedback we got from the survey, and come up with what the wish list was for the council for the RFP.
Yeah, I understand that too, but at some point, I think, my intention was, let's have a retreat every year to talk about the citywide stuff. I'm, I'm just going to say, for example, if we know we're going to have to replace a million-dollar fire truck, let's start talking about it now, not three years down the road. We got to say, "Oh, my gosh, we need a fire truck, where do we get that money?"
Okay.
So I'm talking about an overall strategic planning session.
I think that we will need longer than the four hours or the five hours that was planned for this, the downtown piece. I support doing that, I think it's a great idea. I don't know if it's scheduled for this particular retreat.
Okay. So we, can we consider then?
Absolutely, I think it'd be a great idea.
An annual planning event?
Yes, I think we should.
Citywide?
I, I think maybe January, you know, when the, when the new groups here is, I think, I think every January it would be a great idea to do.
It goes hand in hand with planning the budget.
100% agree with you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Madam Vice Speaker, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ann, appreciate it. Okay, now we go to Jay Bowlin for safety, public safety.
Thank you, Linda, I have no actionable items tonight.
Okay. Then we go to Public Utilities Chairman Bill Ball.
Thank you. Let's look at the list. So, um, Danny's going to talk about starting off with some corrections to our previous minutes, Danny?
Yes. So back in, there's two items here. The first one is the reuse expansion. Uh, this goes along with Phase Two that we're doing. We approved it, I'm just going to find the date so I can make sure I get the right date. On October 12, 2017, we approved the capital, I'm sorry, we approved the reused project That's part of the plant reuse, we, uh, we just did an upgrade, but we did not identify the funding source, so before it becomes a finding for the audit, I would like to just clear it up that that will be coming from capital recovery fees.
So we're going to put that, we'll put that in a motion on Thursday?
Okay. The same thing with the second item, the evocal filter, this is part of the Phase Two. Uh, this was, in order to save tax money on sales tax, we elected to pay for the equipment upfront before the plant started, and that was for, on March 14th, 2019. We approved another consent agenda for $162,906.90, but that also needs to be earmarked for capital recovery funds as well.
Okay.
And that's all I have for those two.
Sure. And then on the, uh, you were going to have, you want Brandon to talk about the CDBG, or you're going to talk?
If you have questions, we'll be, this is just an agreement to renewal for the CDBG. Um, I believe it's every three years. Brandon, if you want to come up and say anything else, but it's an agreement, gives the mayor the authority to sign for Gwinnett County.
And if we, if we don't sign it, we still have to sign it, we have to bow out of it if we're not going to do it.
That's correct.
But certainly, certainly.
Yes, like I said earlier, we did not receive a grant for 2020, but we have, um, applied for the next phase. We did not receive a grant for 2020, but we have applied for the next phase for sewer, what we voted on last month. But this is an agreement for that.
Sure. Any questions on it? No, and so, and the only other thing, just a reminder, we do have the traffic study survey. It's a real simple, quick, straightforward survey. If anybody's interested, you can go fill it out and online. But other than that, there's no, nothing else.
Thank you, Bill, appreciate it. As for me, I have no actionable items for tonight. And then we'll move to Danny Ford for human resource.
Thank you, Ms. Vice Mayor. I have a couple of items tonight. One concerns our city elections. Staff has made a recommendation to the city council to approve contracting or partnering with Walton County to conduct city elections. This is something that I have talked to Christie about, I have talked to Danny about it in depth. And at this time, Christie, if you would, if you, well, you can speak from right there, I guess, if you want to. You got a, you got a mic, just go for it.
I'm good with either way. Okay, so, this is, since 2008, I have been exclusively the election superintendent for the city. But I have worked in the elections since 1997. So, it's always been something that I have been involved with and, and done. Over the years, especially within the last two elections, within the last, since 2015, elections has changed dramatically since, from what it used to be. There are so, we are under so many more laws, requirements, restrictions that it is becoming, it's becoming to where I felt like this is the time I needed to reach out to, to some other entities and say, to the counties and say, "Hey, what kind of help can you offer us?" Be, be it machinery, be it workers, whatever. So, this, I reached out, well, I've been talking, we have talked, actually talked to the county in 2019 previously. They reached out to us, and I'm talking Walton County, 'cause we do split both counties. Walton County approached us because at the time they were looking for an early voting site. And they were also looking for a new precinct for the Baptist church. And at the time, they wanted to use the Rock Gym for all of that. So, we looked at it, we thought, "Well, you know, we would like to work with you, but at the same time, our Rock Gym is a rental facility." So, we did not feel that it was advantageous for the city to say, "Yes, please use it for an early voting site." Because what that means is, at the time, early voting was three weeks at a time. So, anytime you would have in a presidential or county election year, that could be a minimum of four different elections that would take place. So, that would be a minimum of four months out of that 12-month period. It would take our gym out of the rotation for us to, to rent. So, we said, "Well, we really don't think that that's a good thing, that we can do that right now." So, anyway, they went, got Meridian Park, they got new equipment. What happened with us, we are, because we are a part of Gwinnett County, we are held to some of the restrictions or some of the orders that Gwinnett County is under. Specifically, the Voting Rights Act that was enacted in 2015 with Gwinnett County. Their population had reached the point where dual elections was required. Meaning that their population, their Hispanic population had grown to the point that by law, they were required to offer everything to do with an election in Spanish and English, which has proven to be a challenge. Because the state itself is not under that order, just Gwinnett County and the state of Georgia. So, what that means as far as election supplies, everything has to be translated in both languages. Well, Gwinnett County at the time had not had an election. And they basically said, "Well, we're not gonna help y'all, Gwinnett cities." So, the Gwinnett cities had to get together and figure out how to translate signage, forms, everything to do with an election, which was able to be done. But every time they make a change in the law, a form changes, a sign changes, that means that all of that has to change again. We also are required to have a poll worker on site that speaks Spanish. Because if someone requests Spanish help, we have to be able to provide it. So, that has led to a lot more restrictions. Now, we all know elections has come down to being very, it's really a hot topic. People wanna make sure that your election is transparent, that it is done in the most proper way, which is exactly what I want to see done. And I felt like with the requirements in Gwinnett County, with the new laws that are coming out, that have came out this year, that is still being disseminated, I guess you could say. I really felt like, okay, I gotta have somebody, I'm the only kind of person working on it, so I need to reach out to the people that do this all the time. Plus our machines. If you voted in our city elections, you realize on Election Day, we use the Shoop voting machines, which were built in the 40s. I have been a big proponent of those forever. Because, you know, they're not, they're not a computer, you can't necessarily get into them and hack them. However, the problem that I have had since 2017 is someone to program the machines. The gentleman that programs the machines is, was in his 80s in 2017. And he, he came, he programmed my machines, but he really had a hard time. Last year, I was kinda nervous to try to call, 'cause I didn't know if he was even still with us. He was, but he was unable to, to program them. So, I was able to reach out to a relative, relative of him, he came and programmed my machines. So, it's getting harder for us to get those machines. As a part of the Voting Rights Act that Gwinnett County is under, every time there is an election, that representatives from the Department of Justice actually come out. And they visit every polling precinct to make sure that you are compliant with the restrictions or the guidelines of that act. The only thing that they've really had concern with is my machines. Because the machine cannot accommodate the dual language, there's no way for us to put Spanish and English on that machine. I have been able to make do by making one machine completely Spanish, but their question and problem really was, it doesn't address people that are hearing impaired. It doesn't address people that may have visual problems. Or even your person that comes in in a wheelchair, can't necessarily reach to the top of the levers to make a choice. So, when I started talking with the Gwinnett clerks again this year, that there is potential out there that a third language could be added in Gwinnett County. So, there's, it'd be an Asian language. So, there's absolutely no way that we can use those machines. So, I reached out to the county and I said, "Hey, what kind of help can you offer?" Before I knew it, they came and they said, "Look, we wanna help y'all. We're, we can help you with the Gwinnett people, we can help you with the equipment, we have it, your citizens have already used it. Citizens' money's paid for this, we really wanna help you." So, I started, you know, talking to them, trying to figure out, you know, what is feasible, what is possible. I can tell you, the things that I can tell you, Walton County does provide election services for Monroe and Social Circle and have for quite some time. So, it's not unusual for them to help a city out. We would not, they wouldn't do everything. We would still, my recommendation is, we would still be the qualifying officer. Meaning, anyone interested in qualifying for elections would actually come and still come to our office, would qualify with us, we would get the qualifying fees. We would be the ones to be able to say, "Well, here's your qualifying packet, this is the information, you know, as far as, there's all kinds of information in that packet." We would still be able to give them that. Any type of ethics filings, you know, every year you have to redo your, either your campaign disclosures, your financial disclosures, those would still be filed with us. We would be the ones submitting those to the state. What they would be helping us with would be the workers. The county has a large pool of workers that are familiar with not only their machinery, they're familiar with the new procedures to, or the security of those machines, for how the handling of the ballots and the data cards, how that all handle, how that is all handled. They have the ability through, they, they don't pay their poll workers through their payroll system or through their AP. They pay it through a temp service. So, they have the ability through that temp service to say, "Hey, I need a Spanish and poll, I need a Spanish-speaking poll worker." I said, "Well, can that accommodate, like, if I need an Asian language at some point?" They're like, "Absolutely." That was huge. 'Cause sometimes getting, finding workers that want to come and work, early voting especially is really hard. So, that is a big thing, the equipment, the workers. Their expertise is huge to me. 'Cause that would take a, a lot to be able to have someone else to be able to say, "Okay, what does this mean? How do we, how do we make this work?" Let me see, let me look at my notes. There was some question, there has been question raised, "Well, what about county and city elections?" Typically, county elections and state elections are the off-year of city elections. So, the only time that there might be a county or city election at the same time would be in the case of either the county or the city having a special election. Say, we had somebody that resigned or passed away and we had to hold a special election, like when we lost the mayor several years ago. That could possibly be a potential time that you would have a county and a city election going on at the same time. But that wouldn't be an issue as far as when somebody comes in to vote, you are, your, those cards are programmed based on the combos of where you live. So, if they put your information in, it pulls those combos and it could pull in your city ballot along with your county ballot. Let's see. Utilizing their poll workers would help. Right now, the staff that we have used for majority of the time we do early voting, it's, it's our staff that does it. It's myself, it's Ansley, we have a couple of other people that we utilize. But what that does is take us away from our day-to-day operations as well. So, that's, that makes it hard. 'Cause we're still trying to, you know, pay employees, handle open enrollment. There's still things that we're trying to handle that it's difficult and probably not proper to handle, you know, in a polling situation. So, that would be another reason that I have reached out to them for that help. They, like I said, the county, they have trained workers, they, they will train the workers. You are required to have training every year for your poll workers, they will do that. They, let's see.
Speaking back to church.
Oh, okay. So, one of the things that they came to us and they mentioned this time as well, is they mentioned that they have been told by the Baptist church that they can't use the church as a polling precinct any longer. So, they had, they need, that polling precinct needs to move somewhere else, and typically in this area. So, they, their question and their, their request is to allow us to let them use the Rock Gym. Well, with them already doing their early voting at Meridian Park, I told them, I said, "I can't speak for the council, but what I feel like is if we allowed that to happen, you're looking at three days, 'cause they set up on a Monday, election is Tuesday, and they pick it up on the Wednesday." I said, "I would be willing to think that that might be more conducive because typically people don't rent the Rock Gym on a Monday, Tuesday, and a Wednesday." So, that is something that they have, that they have asked us. You know, we would really like to be able to move that precinct. Because they've, they've gotta find somewhere for it to go. Let's see. If, if we, to do this, this was not, this is not a chance, we're not trying to give something up that we don't wanna do. We are really trying to say, we want to bring in their help, we want their expertise. We really feel like, I have been a proponent for years not to turn our election over to the county, for years. 'Cause it has been from the public viewpoint, "Well, why do we have to go to two places? We really want to bring the county in." And I've always, I have always been of the opinion, "Well, we gotta do this anyway." But I never, Walton County had, to that point, it never really said, "Well, Gwinnett is not a problem for us." But I really firmly feel like we're to a point that I feel like this is the best option for us. I really think that moving forward, it's, it's a positive, because I won't always be here. So, we gotta, we need a plan for that. But the ability to be able to utilize equipment that's not gonna cost us anything. Now, they will charge us, like, the cost, the straight pass-through cost, they don't mark anything up. So, we would pay the straight cost for workers, we would pay, which we, you know, do now, we would pay the supply costs. I can tell you that in, for a comparison, the city of Monroe paid $8,400 in 2017, and then they paid eight, right at $8,000 in 2019. And it's based specifically, they charged per the number of people that voted. Because, you know, there is a ballot in the paper and the cost they charge per person that votes. I feel like we would probably be somewhere similar. Our cost may, it may a little more depending on the supplies that's generated because of Gwinnett, Gwinnett County. But that is something that we're gonna incur anyway.
Pretty elections, it's pretty easy.
Well, that is something else. They have, the county said, "Well, we would love to move all early voting to Meridian. That way, the citizens would know, you know, if it's early voting and I live in Loganville and that area, that's where I go, regardless of what election is." I know there has been concern about that, which that's totally not, and, you know, I don't believe that's any kind of deal breaker. If y'all decided, "Hey, we really don't want it at Meridian, we wanna keep it here." I don't think that would be a problem. The only thing is, I believe, because of the size of the equipment, because of everything involved with the equipment, we would have to have it at the Rock, that would have to be at the Rock Gym. Which means that Rock, the Rock Gym would basically, it would close it down for our election, for early voting until the election. That's just something that, you know, you just have to understand. Because there are security to the building, they have to lock it up in a certain way. Things are taken out, and like, the ballots are taken securely out at night, there's procedures for that. The way that they're, they're protected, the way that they are handled, that is all specific, they have procedures for that. So, either wherever that would be, that procedure would have to be in place and that building would have to be secured for that time. I think that's a lot of information.
Are we required?
Can, can I continue on and we'll get back to questions, okay? Is that fine?
Sure.
Danny, do you have anything that you wanna add to this? Please.
No, I mean, we, we've talked about it for the last couple of weeks. I spoke with Robin about it and, you know, legally, it does help us more, I guess, transparent. We've, you know, been accused in the past of paper ballots, 'cause we do paper ballots for early voting, where I believe the county would use a machine. So, that was the only issue. I reached out to Robin, asked her about it, what was, is a smart move. If you're worried about the public having an issue with it, that would be the only concern. But far as legally, it may make more sense letting the county do it. So, when I first talked to Christie about it, I was gonna make sure, you know, that I wanted her still remain the election superintendent. But after, I believe it was last, Friday of last week, the county said if there were gonna be one certain final vote, they would have to be required.
Now, I have also said from the beginning that I would really, I love to be able to be at the polling precinct on Election Day. You know, from a standpoint of observing, from helping if necessary. I don't look at it as a, you know, complete hands-off situation. It truly, I look at it as a partnership. And Walton County has been more than gracious in wanting to help us in any way that they can.
Robin, do you have anything to add to that, please?
The reason that Danny says it would help legally is because anytime you stop providing a service, you can't get sued for providing that service. So, I just wanna make that clear, that you're not legally exposed to anything additionally if you decide to give the elections to the county. Does that make sense?
And I, this is, would be a year-to-year kind of contract too. If we decide, "Hey, this isn't working," or, "Hey, we wanna take it back over," it doesn't obligate us to keep, to continue to do that.
Okay, Lisa, you have some concerns, go ahead.
I don't have concerns, I have questions.
Okay.
So, if I remember right, and help me-
So, if I remember right, and help me remember, Christie, when I was up for election, that was 2017?
Yes.
Me and Danny and Ray, and we used those shoot machines.
We did.
Agreed. They're, they're a little, little dated, but they worked.
They did.
So if we, if we continue to do that, if council chooses, we still use it, are we still required to secure those every night, like you're just talking about the county is?
Well, I mean, we do secure them, but we, we currently only use those machines on election day. Our, um, early voting has always been paper ballot.
Okay, that was my second question, cause I remember when I came out and voted for Bill, these three, it was a paper ballot?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
And remember too, those machines are, it's hard to find somebody to, uh, set them up.
I, I, I have said in the past, if we don't look to move to that, a different type of machinery, we're probably gonna look at complete paper ballot, because it just, it just would be that way.
So what would the cost be to replace it with the new machines?
I reached out to the county today because I was interested in, because the question has come up, well, can't we buy our own machines? Well, we can. Um, the county actually did not have to pay for the equipment. Um, the, it was a state contract, so the state bought the machinery and then they gave it out to the counties. Um, but I do have the, the current price list and just, there's a lot of items on here. Um, but just my basic things that I think that we would have to have, you're looking at a cost of around fifty thousand dollars. And I have that price list if y'all want to see it.
So you're saying that for the, if we have them, okay, can I go ahead?
No, go ahead, you're, I'm just.
So if we go ahead and, and let Walton County help us, then our cost would be a whole lot less than fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, well, but we wouldn't have to pay for any of the equipment. The only thing necessarily you'd have to pay would be that maybe the supplies, like the, the ballot paper is, is a cost. Um, some of the tabulation machine paper maybe, like a, a paper roll, maybe a cartridge for a printer. Um, those would be the, the, those kind of costs that you would look at rather than the actual cost of the actual equipment.
So Jay, you're grinning there, so what's on your mind?
Jay's gonna be on his best behavior from now on, so I'm just kind of taking it all in. I've been around a while, I've done a few elections. Christie actually does a fantastic job and her staff. It's unfortunate that when people run and lose, they turn into crybabies and, and really make her life difficult. Here's my concern. Gwinnett County is being ignored and that's a concern. We get to Walton County, I say our elections are eighty percent Walton County, right? Twenty percent Gwinnett. There's probably, let's see, Foxchase and Breckenridge, probably about thirty people in each subdivision. So Gwinnett's kind of ignored. So my concern is, I like turning it over to the county, but I don't think we need to send people heat from here to Meridian.
And I don't think that would be an issue if that's something that y'all are interested in.
And I think we need to talk to Gwinnett about maybe opening the fire station or something on Gwinnett to encourage people on Gwinnett to vote.
What do you mean?
Because if I live in Breckenridge or Foxchase or Ashton Manor, to come down and get to the Rock Gym is a pain, especially with all the traffic.
Well, I, if to do that, you would have to, we would have to designate a second polling precinct in the city.
I think we need to talk about that, because every year it's less and less people, and I know, I know this, cause I spend a lot of time, Bill, you do. You see, when, when the, when the results, you look at the, the data, and nobody from Gwinnett shows up, it's, well, you know what I mean?
It has increased.
That was very.
It has not increased. It, you just have never really had a lot of interest from Gwinnett, but it has, it has increased. We had more vote in Gwinnett in this last election than we have, which is a great thing. Um.
Cause that's a big problem, is we don't have a lot of turnout on election day. This election will probably have a thousand people, maybe twelve hundred, as the mayor Ray's probably right. I just want to really consider doing something in Gwinnett besides just making those folks come here.
And, and you know, if, I mean, that's something that you can do, you just have to realize that's gonna double the cost, because that's more poll workers, that's more equipment, that's more supplies, that's more signage. I mean, it does.
But if we outsource this to the county, does it double their cost or double our cost?
Yeah, because it would be two precincts. I mean, you would be essentially having an election, it'd be like on the county election, like in the city, there, they have, what, four polling precincts? In a sense, we would be having now, you would have to have two.
So, so they pick up that tab or we pick up that tab?
I mean, we would ultimately pick it up anyway, but.
The issue would be location, though. There is no loca, it has to be in the city and it needs to be a city building, be secure, and the fire station on the Gwinnett side has seven parking spaces. That was the issue when we built that, we knew that from the get-go, so, cause at one time it was talked about being a community room for an election, but that whole land swap went south and we have, I think there's seven, maybe less than seven parking spaces, and four of those were taken by on-duty firefighters.
Anne?
I'm sorry. How long does a voting machine last? What's the life of a voting machine? Not the ones that we currently have, the green ones.
You know, it depends on if the, if the state changes. Um, you know, the state used the DREs for twenty years.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's hard to say.
Well, I'm just, from a budget standpoint, if it's eleven thousand dollars a year, that's, and it's fifty grand to do polling, to do new stations at five years, it's paid for it, and then we get fifteen years where it's not ten grand a year.
If they use them that long.
Right. But we've used those green ones forever. And I know that, I know that that's an anomaly. I, I get that. So, okay, I just wanted to know. Thanks.
I've thought about this all weekend till my head hurts. I've been thinking that for a long time. And I couldn't call you guys, cause you're on vacation. So, I mean, I could, but I didn't. So I think the key is, what it comes down to is, um, let me back up. I, I thought about this too. I remember you telling us when we raised taxes a couple of years ago, that one of the big reasons why is because we need to add people to this, to the office. So we've added people to the office, and one reason that we did that was because of the elections. It was a burden over here, cause we took people out of their office and their day job, put them over there. So that, that worries me a little, but I think the biggest.
That was most, mostly for finance admin.
But it was still talked about it. That was one of the reasons we justified the tax increase. So the, um, I think the biggest thing for me is, is, is the, where we're gonna have it, cause I know, and knocking on doors and talking to people, it surprised me that so many people, people didn't know on the small elections where to go and vote. So I would like to have consistency. It's, it seems to me to be ideal to have somewhere in the middle of the city for Gwinnett County's sake. It's a little bit challenging to get in and out of the park of Twin Lakes and, and eighty-one. So that, to me, that's what it comes down to, is that, I think we need to have a clear place where people can know to go to vote.
And I think that we're okay with Danny correcting using a Rock Gym?
Yes.
For all those elections?
I mean, I know that was, two of y'all's I talked to's concerned. I'm sure the rest of y'all's concern is leaving them here. I don't believe there'll be a deal breaker with the county, and if it is, then we'll continue to do what we're doing. Um, but if you want elections to stay here, then we'll keep them here, and, but we will have to move to the Rock Gym, cause the machines, if we go with the county, they, they do require more space. And, you know, another thing we're not talking about is the COVID restriction now. There's a whole new thing that has changed. Um, so there, there's, there's more to it and just say we don't want to do it. I don't want that, cause I had that issue at first until Christie informed me of all the stuff that is required. And the election has changed since this last presidential election.
Well, and it's changed just since our, I mean, it's changed, it's just, it's just, it's changing every year and it's, it's, it's exponentially changing. And the law change is just, is just crazy. I had got an email today from some of the Gwinnett County citizens just on the restrictions on drop boxes that you're required to have, and the security and the, and the procedures that you have to go through. I mean, it's, it's quite overwhelming when you start looking at, at everything.
Danny, there's not a place in Gwinnett we could put a new polling place?
The only city building that we own is the fire station.
So that's out?
Well, I mean, you have, there's no parking.
So that's, so we, we're.
Unless y'all want to build a, a parking behind it, there is some land that we have behind it.
Let's not go there. Let's not start talking about building stuff.
Yeah, you remember, that was a whole land swap, yeah.
But, but in seriousness.
Probably, we own behind the, we own land behind the fire station, it's undeveloped. But you have that easement with the utility company that sits directly on the, on the line. But I don't see any private entity letting us use their building exclusively.
And remind me, when does early voting start? Is it two weeks out or three out, three out?
It's, uh, the, the law just changed it to two.
It's two now?
Mm-hmm. And it's actually, it should, the way it's written, it would typically start, the way the calendar falls, this year on, um, and I don't know the date exactly, but it would be Columbus Day, but because Columbus Day is a holiday, um, it wouldn't start till the next day. It's not a holiday for us, but it is a holiday under the way that's described in the law, so it wouldn't actually start till Tuesday.
So.
Okay, so it would be the, it would be the twelfth of October.
So Thursday, you want us to vote on the county or you keep it, right?
Yes.
That's the way it's, yes.
And if we say yes to the county, can we keep it at the Rock Gym?
I don't think that's a problem whatsoever.
So no Meridian Park at all?
If that's what, if that's what y'all want, absolutely.
And we allow the county to use the Rock Gym on their election?
Yeah, let me do it.
That was the third.
Yes, that is, that is, cause that's a, a big thing for them. They had several polling precincts. They explained, um, when they, I spoke with them, that they had a couple of precincts that come down on the election day in November and said, oh, you can't be here, and they had to scramble to find somewhere to go. So them trying to secure that for them is, is, is a, is a thing that they requested of us.
Danny, do you think Gwinnett County could help us out at all?
Gwinnett County will not.
No, 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 wait. Um. For voting on that side.
I believe it has to be in the city limits in order to vote. I'm not, okay, so.
It does.
Oh, that's right.
There is no government building other than the fire station, to my knowledge, that's in the Gwinnett side.
You have another question?
I have one question, sorry. When the Walton County uses the church, is there a fee?
Uh, I don't know if there is a fee or not. I can't remember what they said. I do think they, they may compensate them a little bit. Um.
Well, the only question I would have is if they compensate the church, then I'd want them to compensate us at the Rock Gym.
I, I think that.
And for that to be part of the deal.
They didn't mention us, you know, them, I think that kind of would be like a hand, you know, like a, part of, I mean, I don't explain it. Um.
If they compensated them, they would have.
Yeah, right, right. Kind of like we scratch their back, they scratch ours.
So kind of my questions are really focused on the early voting. So, um, what, just out of curiosity, the last, the last election, we had, I don't know, nine hundred something total votes. How, how many of those were early?
I don't have the numbers with me. I can, I can pull that.
Just ballpark.
No, it was more than that, I think. Mm-hmm. It had drastically increased. More and more people want to vote early. They want to come vote early, they want to get it out of the way so they don't feel like they're pressured on election day. Some people want to come on election day, cause they just want to come on election day. Um, but our early voting has dramatically increased.
But they came, and I, obviously I didn't do it, um, they, they could come to the AG building where it was set up and vote a paper ballot, which can be in any language, just have to have somebody there to help them. Um, what, what, how, how was the AG building selected?
The AG building was, is a, well, we, we decided to use it just because it was a smaller facility and, um, we didn't need as much space to, um, to use paper ballots. Um, so it was just an easier layout for us. Um.
I mean, but we could do it right here.
Right.
Right. But I mean, we could do it, I mean, you have people coming in, paying water bills and things like that here. I mean, is it not feasible, if you want to focus on early voting, is it not feasible to come in and do a paper ballot here?
I mean, we could. They, if, if the county gets involved, it would no longer be a paper ballot. It would be just like you voted on election day.
So if the, if the county's involved, they have, they're gonna tie up a facility for the entire early voting period, and that facility would be what?
Rock Gym.
It would either be the Rock Gym or, they have requested Meridian just because they felt like if we do early voting there, then everybody knows that's where you go. They have control of that building. Um, it's their facility is basically why they were asking that. But I don't think that would be, you know, an issue if we said, hey, we would like to keep it at the Rock Gym. Cause it would need to be, like, we couldn't do it in this room, because we would have council managers' meetings in the middle of that. So, once that equipment is set, it's got to stay where it's at, and it's got to be secured.
Anything else from the council? Anybody from the audience? Melanie?
I just, you're talking about locations. There's a gymnasium right out back here. Have we not considered doing your early voting in this gymnasium back here and keeping it on City Hall property?
There, there's no heating and air in there.
Okay.
I didn't know that, okay.
No, it would not be.
I didn't know that.
Yes, ma'am.
That gets back to your concern initially was if you do early voting and voting in the Rock Gym, then we've lost that facility for that period of time, too.
Right, right. I mean, and that is just, that's something that I can't say, hey, do. I mean, that is truly a, you know, a decision of y'all.
And that wouldn't be just for our election?
Right.
Well, no, I think the county would still do theirs at Meridian Park. That would be, um, that wouldn't be.
So you don't think they tie up the Rock Gym?
No, no, no. They would keep their stuff at the, at Meridian. That just, they wouldn't, this would, you're only would be talking about ours.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, in addressing the Gwinnett County side, um, I work for a church in Gwinnett County that is a polling place on election day, uh, for any election. And we are compensated for each time that they are, they come in. I think we actually just renegotiated that. I think it was, uh, for the longest time, it's been two hundred and fifty dollars for each election is what they have had, the county has, has, or the state, county, county has compensated us. So I don't know if there's, if there's a church in Gwinnett County for election day. Obviously, the early voting would not, you couldn't tie up a, a personal, you know, business, but I don't know if.
There's not a church in the Gwinnett County side?
No, well, the Cross is closed, but it's not.
It's in the city.
No, okay, that's your question.
Is there anyone else? Okay, then we will take a vote on that Thursday night.
And if anybody comes up with any questions, feel free to call me, email me. I'll be glad to answer. If I don't know a question, I can find the answer up for you.
Yeah, call me or call Danny or whoever. Um.
So will that require changes to the agreement?
Well, it would require, it, it does require an agreement. That, well.
Then there'll be an agreement.
The only thing that I, I didn't put in there, I didn't put in there a location of the early voting.
Right.
So, and I did that on purpose. Yeah, that way.
Is this an intergovernmental?
Yeah, it would be an IGA, mm-hmm.
So in two thousand seventeen, you had eleven hundred and forty-eight total votes, eleven hundred and five was in person, forty-three by mail, you had one thousand eight Walton County residents and a hundred and forty Gwinnett County residents voted in the election in November of seventeen.
It does.
Okay. The next item is, uh, the city manager's contract, and I am gonna roll that over to Robin, if you don't mind, please.
I'm happy to. I sent you all a copy of that contract today, um, and then made one revision to it. These are very simple changes that we are making to, or that are contained within this revised employment agreement. And that employment agreement is between the city and Danny Roberts as city manager. There is no change in compensation in any of the revision. There, it does state a different compensation than the original employment agreement, just because there have been increases over the years. And as is reflected within the original agreement and the revised agreement, any raises that he has gotten are commensurate, they're on the same pace as other city employees. So that is that change. His residence address was updated in that revision to, um, his current address. I feel weird talking about you like you're not sitting here, but, um, the other change is to extend the termination date out to June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-seven. That's just to keep in lockstep with Danny's retirement benefits. It's just to, merely to parallel those benefits. There's also, in addition, you will see in there, that would provide Danny with legal counsel and indemnification in the event he is sued for any of the things that, or duties he performs as city manager. As I mentioned in the email that I sent you, that is very standard. I'm not sure why we didn't put it in the original agreement, but that's why I added it in the revision. The remainder of the revised agreement simply says that the original agreement is incorporated into the revised one, so that. into the revised one, so that anything in the original employment agreement that is not changed in the revision remains in full force and effect. So I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Counsel, anybody have any questions?
I do. Was it, was there a committee meeting to talk about these changes?
No.
Is there, no? So how did we get to this? How did we decide that we need to make these changes?
I have been talking to Danny for quite some time, and he's been talking to Robin for quite some time. The committee consists of me, Ann, and Jay. We personally have not talked as a committee, no.
This is something, I'll, I'll go ahead and say that many coun, not many, but several council members have mentioned through the years. The original employment agreement was put into place in 2017, in January 2017, so it's fairly dated as far as employment agreements go, and there are several things, as I've said, that did need to be updated within the agreement, which is my understanding of why you have it in front of you now.
Okay, so the current contract has 21 months left in it, and we don't typically vote on a contract until it gets closer to expiration.
We're going to do this one.
We are?
We're going to vote on it Thursday night.
Okay.
That's, I'm going to call for a vote. Now, the mayor can say no.
But I think her question was why now?
My question is why, we typically vote on contracts a year out. For example, usually in January, voting on the bans that Christie lines up.
This is different from a ban. This is a personnel situation.
It's a contract, it's a contract.
It's a personnel situation. I don't think there's anybody here that would say that we do not need to take care of our city manager. If there is, I'm going to be very disappointed.
We need to take care of all of our city employees, yes.
That's exactly right. Our, our city manager will not take a raise if the county, if the city employees do not get a raise, he will not take one. Bill, did you want to say something?
So I'm, no, it is, I appreciate the comment Lisa made, I mean, it's, just want to know what, where the discussion was, and, you know, I'm, adding the indemnification and attorney's protection, if that should be in there, I'm fully agree with that, and fully agree with my support for Danny and the city employees. It's just, we're, we're, is it premature at this point to extend a contract when it's, you know, his, his term was through March 17th of 2023?
Danny, don't you love this? Talking about you right here.
I have.
You are the best, we love you.
Well, I will say, to address your comment, Bill.
Sure.
Without the indemnification and the legal protection that's contained within that revised portion, that makes me nervous for Danny.
Sure.
I have, you know, I've been the city attorney for a long time, and I have seen department heads, for example, have to retain their own counsel and pay for it, and that makes me nervous for anyone who is in a position with the city who may be, suffer legal consequences or be sued, or be involved in litigation. And while I don't think that anyone sitting up here right now wouldn't provide Danny with that, or approve it if it happens, I think it's important that he has that protection. There is no one in the city, period, that is on the front lines more than the city manager, regardless of who's sitting in that chair, and who is more likely to be subject to litigation, would be him. And by the same token, there is no one in the city who is on the front lines politically, or who takes it more politically, if that makes sense, than your city manager, regardless of who's sitting here. I do think that the city manager position is one that is unique to any other position in the city.
And I will agree that the indemnification part, I have no issue at all, but extend the contract that expires in 2023 to 2027, when we don't know who's going to be on the council, then that's like me speaking for the future councils, and putting that in place, and I don't think that we need to do that.
And, and it's y'all's decision, it's not mine, but just to speak to that point, that there is a termination procedure within the original employment agreement. That has not been revised at all. Anyone who sits in your chairs from now through the termination date of that agreement can relieve Danny of his position.
For any reason.
It doesn't change that. All it does, and again, it's your decision, not mine, it prevents an automatic termination of the agreement.
I have a question. The original employment agreement, as I read it, would stay in place where, and I know you wouldn't do this, but if he did wrong, or he did something he wasn't supposed to do, this doesn't extend it and give him immunity forever?
No.
All of that is originally in place. All this does is extends his end date to the contract and shows our confidence in his ability to do his job.
Yes, you as a council do not have the authority to give him that protection.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yes, all of that is still in place.
Could we add an amendment that covers him legally?
What, what do you mean?
Right, because the purpose of this contract is, obviously, we don't want him to go anywhere, right? But there's an amendment, right, that we're going to add to this, so he's covered legally? That's not there now?
Well, that's this amended employment agreement, and what it does is it, it basically brings the original agreement and puts these both together, so you read them together. So all of the termination provisions of the original employment agreement are still in place, and as Ann says, you know, if Danny does something wrong, or the people sitting up here after y'all don't like him, they can get rid of him.
And this is not personal. It is, it is business, and that's just my opinion, Danny, that I don't think we should extend contracts that far out, especially when the current contract has 21 months left on it.
That's fine, it's your opinion. Anybody else?
I was.
Time out.
Poor Danny Roberts.
I'm just kind of taken back by the way that you're responding to everybody. I mean, you went at least, or whoever it was, it was happening, like, that's just not sitting well with me. Like, what I'm hearing all seems like, okay, but the way that you're coming out of the gate has my stomach flipping a little bit. I mean, the way you were looking at Bill, like, it's just something.
I think we should have probably had a committee meeting about it. I think everybody would have felt a lot better. I mean, let's just say it's a rubber stamp type deal, we should have still done the process.
Well, had I known about this, and, you know, we get these this morning, so I've had very little time to digest this, so you're asking us to make a decision for a future council, I don't think we should do that.
Okay. I'm not really sure why a future council gets more credence than an employee who has served how many years?
It's not personal, it's really not personal.
Of course it's personal.
Sure it is.
He's in the job. He's, he's not an elected official, he's put his blood, sweat, and tears here, and is still, is still doing so. Danny, how many years, I'm sorry?
Voluntary included, 30 years.
Thank you.
But again, no one loves Danny more than Jastro. I was going to say maybe, but you're here, so. I think it's just the fact that it was slipped in. That's it. It's not personal. I stood up for Danny, he took over the whole council meeting one night, to stand up for Danny. It's just, it feels kind of.
Well, I will take full responsibility for the fact that you didn't get it until this morning.
Ask your mayor when he did it Thursday night.
I mean, that, that is me, that is, I should have gotten it to you last week, and I apologize for that.
It's not that anyone needs to take a responsibility, it's just.
Oh, no, I'm just saying, like, like, I don't want you all to.
It's like we have a committee of one making this decision.
But I'm just responding to the fact that you got it this morning, that was all me being busy, so I take responsibility for that part of it.
Can I say one thing? And I, I think the reason that the date is important is because that is the date that Danny will reach the rule of 80 under our retirement plan, and what that means is at that point, he's eligible to retire with the maximum formula benefit. If he was to leave prior to that, then he couldn't draw his benefit, and he could start drawing it at 55, but it would be at a 50% reduction. So I think that that date was probably chosen, and I'm totally speaking, I'm just speaking from a human resource standpoint to, so y'all maybe understand maybe why that was chosen, because at that point, that would give him the opportunity to take that full calculation benefit without a reduction. I think that would be why that would be chosen, not just like randomly pulled out of the air.
Anybody else?
I just have an observation, Jay. I happen to have the utmost respect for Danny. I think he's doing a fabulous job under difficult circumstances most of the time, but I don't think he needs protecting. I think to sit up here and talk about changing this and doing that is belittling him and his job that he does. He is more than capable, based on his job and his talents and everything he does for this city, to take care of himself. He does not need to be protected, and I, I don't understand why an addendum cannot be attached to the current contract dealing with the legal issue, because he absolutely does need to have some sort of remedy, should he be sued, provided by the city, that, that's a given, but I don't understand why an addendum can't be attached to the current contract. But as far as him needing some sort of protection is what I'm kind of observing, he doesn't. He's, he's more astute than anybody in this room, would be my guess. He's more than equipped to take care of himself, so I don't, I don't appreciate him being belittled and discussed as if he needs some sort of protection, because he doesn't. He's good.
That'll suffice, mayor, that's all I have.
Okay. All right, well, if that's all we have, and there's no other, nobody else, so Danny, did you have any reports?
Uh, yes, I do have one. So, our committee seats are open for the.
Thank you, Melanie. Committee seats are open for the LDA, the Ethics, and the Planning and Zoning, I believe. Lisa, want to add something with that?
Yep, what I wanted to talk about with everybody is that on our, the committees and boards that we assign the citizens to, that we maybe start streamlining this, or playing it off of what we do with our planning and zoning, which is go through an application process. I want to use, with your permission, Dana Russell as an example. Dana was assigned to the LDA, and now he's assigned to the library board. So in my opinion, if we do that, I think that we should sign one, one citizen per committee or board, and doing this, we've set ourselves up potentially for Dana may have to recuse himself to vote if this library board moves forward on the LDA side, or he may have to accuse himself on the library side. So that's just an example. I don't want to rehash the past when this was had, this has been issues in the past, but I think that we ought to consider going through an application process, and one person per committee. That's my, any discussion?
Is that, is that here, is that?
No, the agenda hasn't been set yet, she asked me to add it, but currently, there is only one person per committee for commissions. I think the issue was other committees that the city doesn't control, such as the library board, Walton County Development Authority, those are picked by the mayor, so just, you know, we talked about moving the development authority like we did to P&amp;Z with the picks, but that got, y'all decided not to change it, but I think we're just talking about applications, correct, for each committee?
No, if you don't know someone to pick for a committee, or to appoint a committee, then maybe we go through an application process and let everybody in the city have a chance to apply, and then find somebody, rather than picking the same one. I'm afraid we're starting to turn into musical chairs with our boards and committees.
So which boards and committees are going to apply? P&amp;Z, who else?
I think the planning zoning is the only one we have an application for.
Governor, I mean, what other committees that we control, so the Ethics?
Yeah, the LDA, the, well, the mayor picks the library board, the Ethics Committee.
Planning and zoning.
Yep.
So for the Development Authority and Ethics, each council member and the mayor has a pick.
Right.
On the Ethics, the mayor has three picks, so out of nine people, three are chosen to hear Ethics complain.
So would it be something in our charter that would just eliminate the ability to nominate a person to more than one board?
It's already there. What Lisa, I think, is trying to ask is have an application that you fill out to join the Development Authority and the Ethics, like we do sometimes on the planning and zoning when there's more than one applicant.
Right, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't fix or address picking on you, Dana Russell, the LDA and the library board, correct?
If I understand this correctly, you're saying that if you came and wanted to be on, for instance, the Ethics Committee, but you're already, the application would reveal that he was already on the library board, so he would be disqualified from serving on a city committee or commission? Is that right?
Yes. But now, if he chose to step down from the current committee because he wanted to apply to the other committee, then sure, but what I'm saying is we need to try to keep from putting the same person on multiple committees and boards between the city and the county.
So you would, you would do everything by application, the proposal would be to do by everything by application, rather than picks?
Yes. Well, you still get your pick, but let other people from the city apply, so that we give all citizens a chance. Now, if you can't, if you don't know somebody to, for this board, then don't go find somebody on a current committee to be on it.
I do know that the Ethics Committee, and I think the LDA both have it in their bylaws, that they're picked by the council, so that may be something that has to be changed if you do that.
Well, I'm not saying change that process, I'm just saying, if you don't know somebody, let's put an application out there so others can apply, and then you can find somebody.
You're just saying, any potential candidate, whether or not you know them, should do an application?
I would, for me, I would love to see it, just like to do our planning and zoning.
Okay. But if you already have your pick, do you still open the application process?
Yes, and you still could have your pick, have your person apply, you have your pick, but if you don't know anybody, we don't have an application process, don't go find somebody on a current committee and double them up.
Right.
Danny, do you have any thoughts?
No.
Okay. Linda, do you have any thoughts?
Does anybody else have anything? Okay.
Yeah, it's just a question that I have. Is that not a conflict of interest? Dana is a friend and on the LDA with me, and now I've learned he's on the library board, is that not a conflict of interest?
I don't see it being a conflict of interest, but like I said before, it's, and I'm not the attorney here, by no means, but, well, I've seen, like we've had before, we've had certain people have to recuse themselves from a vote. We need everybody that we put on the committee to be able to vote, in my opinion. So if, if you're on a committee where you have to recuse yourself, then it's, you wouldn't be serving your committee, and this is no fault of yours, no fault of yours. No, and listen, we had a conversation before this, so he, yeah.
I was just going to say, because I know what you're saying, but a lot of times, we come to a meeting and they go, so and so was appointed to something, and nobody in this room even know that that seat was open. I think maybe that's more what Lisa's trying to say, is that there's not a place that we can publicize, hey, we're going to have these seats open, and then let people that are interested, because y'all do, y'all keep picking the same dag gum four people for everything.
That is a good, I mean, that, that's a good point. I did not know Dana, it was my pick from the LDA, was on the library board until I went to the library board's meeting that night.
And speaking of that, why did the library board not introduce all their library members at the library town hall, but that's on another subject?
Yeah, anyways.
Well, I mean, I'd be happy to be a guinea pig, as I have an ethics position, the Ethics Board position open, so if we want to try it with that application process, I'm happy to do that.
We're also going to have to do it for the LDA, because Dr. Phil, excuse me, Skip Alauz, the great healer of our city, is going to run for mayor, so we're going to need LDA versus two.
I think you're working through a pick as well.
The only thing I want to be careful of is that if I had somebody that I wanted to put in the position, like I knew somebody, I would hate to do an application process because it would be disingenuous to the other applicants to do it that way.
I agree.
So that takes that away from the city council as far as appointing anyone?
No, no, no. No, no, that's not what I'm saying at all. No, I'm saying, rather, if you. if you don't know someone, if we have an application process, you're gonna get applications in. I'm not saying take it away from the council at all. That was, that was said.
I have an Ethics pick. If you're interested, send me an email. How's that? We'll see how it goes.
And then, I just want to clarify, though. Are we, are we also saying that if you have an Ethics pick who happens to be on another board somewhere else, that they cannot?
I don't think we can say that, because it's not in our ordinance or-
Well, you can't, but to your point, for the library board, for instance, or Walton County Commissioner, or something like that, that you don't control.
Right.
But you do control your city commissions, Ethics, P&amp;Z, LDA. You could always, I'm not suggesting this, this is what I thought you were saying, actually, is that if someone came and they were on another committee somewhere else that's tangentially connected to the city, that they could not then serve on a purely city commission. I may have misunderstood.
No. So any, no one wants to make a change?
I'm not really sure how to affect the change in a way that we can control. I, I agree, I like the application process, but I would have, I think it should be all the committees that we control, picking on you again. I don't think Dana is any less effective on either board because he serves on both, and I trust him enough that if he hit something that he thought was a conflict of interest, that he would recuse himself. And frankly, we don't have a long list of people that want to serve, so why make it harder?
Well, that's one reason for the application process. You, you know, you don't know. You might get them. Other cities do it, but there are applications out there. And the point was not to say that he, that we would or would not trust him. The point is, don't put him in a position where he may have to recuse himself, because we need anybody that's serving on a committee to be able to vote. We need all of them to be able to vote.
I agree with that.
Not to recuse themselves. I look at the Planning and Zoning Commission recently. What happened there? When they didn't have, they had a member not show up, and they had one that had to recuse himself, and then they almost couldn't take a vote.
Right.
So that's, in my mind, I'm thinking that's what we're trying to avoid.
Okay.
If you don't want to go through the application process, if y'all don't want to do that, okay. I just wanted to bring it up.
On Thursday, we'll be, I guess, make sure I understand this, for LDA and Ethics, if there's an opening, each respective council member and mayor will have applications sent to that person whose pick it is, for, for a pick. On the Planning and Zoning, it's up to the full weight of the council, so then it would, all the applications would come to Tim, like we've done in the past, and be reviewed by the six of y'all to be voted on. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I was distracted here.
So for the Development Authority and the Ethics Committee, if there was a vacancy, Jay has a vacancy on the Development Authority currently. So, we would put on the website, if you want to run for Development Authority, send your applications to Jay Bowlen, because it's his pick.
Yes.
Same thing with the Ethics. If you had a pick, they would send an application to you, because ultimately, you're the only one that gets to make that pick, not none, no one else.
Yes.
But on the Planning and Zoning, they would make the application to Tim Prater. Tim would forward it through the six council members as a councilman, correct? That's, that's what you're asking for? Okay.
Speaking of LDA and my nomination, Terry Parsons, I need you here Thursday night. You gonna get sworn in, okay?
Did you fill out an application?
Okay. Well, if that is all that we have to talk about, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Okay, so move by Ann and second by Danny. So, we are dismissed.